I call the meeting order, City of University Heights, City Council Meeting, January 11th, 2022. And the meeting is being conducted electronically. Welcome, everyone. Welcome to the new council. And all council are present, all five council are present. First order of business is approval of minutes of the December 14th meeting. Mike circulated those minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, the minutes will be approved by unanimous consent. And I have kind of a lengthy mayor's report, so I want to go down to a city clerk report and have John Olson, who's here with the city audit. Welcome, John. I'll have you speak next.
John is, John is just coming back into the meeting right now.
That's where, oh my goodness. So.
He's on, John, you're on mute right now.
Nice.
Oh, there he is.
Am I, am I okay?
Yeah, we can hear you, John. So we're gonna start with you tonight.
Okay.
You can start. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you right, finally. I've been having some technical difficulties here. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, thank you, Mayor. As most of you know, my name is Jeff. And I'm CPA with Olson. And so we were hired to do the annual examination of the City of University Heights. The purpose of the examination is to perform a check on the processes within the city, rather than forming and focusing on revenues and expenses. This is not a full audit that has been performed. This is an annual examination of the City of University Heights, looking at items the state auditor requires. Our examination procedures are set by the state auditor. And unlike an audit, there is no materiality level, which means if we find any non-compliance, we are required to report the comment along with the recommendation. We are not allowed the professional judgment to determine if a report comment is warranted. In our reports, it is a five-page report that includes on page two, a listing of the city officials. On page two through four is our independent auditors' report on applying agreed-upon procedures. It provides no opinion or assurance on city's operations. It provides the detail of read-upon procedures performed. The detailed recommendations on page five, all of these are relatively minor non-compliance. We've got segregation of duties, which in your case will always be a, always be a comment, given the size of your organization, the size of the city. Certified budget. We found one fund that had a deficit. One function was over expended from the. And we just, and that you keep close watch and amend if, if needed. And I believe it was the Capital Projects Fund. Financial condition. Project was, uh, we had a deficit fund balance in the Capital Projects Fund. And the project was started without any bonding or any other procedures. We have also have a comment for unclaimed property. This relates to long outstanding checks that have not been cashed, and Lori is working on this. I would like to thank the city personnel for their assistance during this virtual examination. Are there any questions?
John, I think the staff did a good job this time. Getting, having the materials ready for you. Didn't you find that?
Yes, it went, it went rather well.
That's what I heard.
And, and I even have a new staff too, so it was kinda, it was more of a issue on my side, but everything seemed to go real well. I do like the, the way they had the Google Drive just set up and we could get the information. And then if we needed something, they just put it right up there.
Yeah, and Mike's a new city clerk too, so that was.
Yeah.
But, so we had a new person too, but I think it went very, very well.
And we's, we went from five comments down to four, so we're progressing. I don't see anything that was be really bad. As I said before, all these are minor non-compliance issues. Leave me, I've seen cities that have way more minutes than this. So you.
Did anyone have a comment? I know you kind of go in and out a little bit at times, John, but I think we got the gist of it. That we're, we're in pretty good shape.
I wonder if my wireless is having, I wonder if my wireless is having some issues.
Well, you're good.
I'm working, I'm working from home due to COVID, so I'm working with the setup I've got. It's about all I can do.
Well, I don't hear any questions or comments. Did you have any, Mike or Lori, that you wanted to say? Or that you're gonna be working on?
I, I, I think that as, as John said, we, we're, we're doing what we can with a two-person staff. We separate, meaning Lori and myself, I handle deposits. Lori handles writing checks. That's how we separate duties and it's kind of hard to separate beyond that. So, um, it's, I, it, John is extremely professional in, in what he asked for and, and it's, it's been a pleasure to work with him.
Thank you, Mike.
Did you have any comments, Lori, that you wanted to say? Okay, very good. So, um, we have to vote on acceptance of the FY21 audit report, accepting the results from Cronenagi and Olson. And this is a, is this a simple vote?
Yes, this is not a roll, this is not a roll call vote.
Yeah, so it's not a resolution or an ordinance. Okay, it's a simple vote. Is council ready to vote?
We need, we need someone to make a motion to accept the report.
So council's ready, so we'll go.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by, was it Bobby? And is there a second?
A second.
Second by staff, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Okay, motion carries five zero. Thank you very much, John, for attending the meeting tonight. At least you didn't have to drive an hour and a half.
Yep.
And it, and it went pretty well. I mean, you know, what we could hear of you. That was great.
There's, there is technical difficulties. I real, I realize that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Okay, so I'm gonna go back to the mayor's report. If I can find all my notes. I wanted to once again welcome the newly elected council for 22 and 23. And I want to thank, I didn't get to thank Sarah O'Sullivan last month, and I want to publicly thank Sarah for her service on the city council. And I'll have a framed certificate of appreciation for her that I'll bring to her. The other thing, every year I do a mayor's MVP, most valuable persons. And once again, in 2021, I want to award this to Carol Anne and Scott Christensen for volunteering for the design, planning, and maintaining the city garden. And the city garden is that center space right on Golf View and at Melrose, the garden area there. That's totally done volunteer and it's totally done with volunteer funds. And so I want to encourage anyone that wants to give a donation to contact Scott and Carol Anne on Grand Avenue. Because I'm sure they're already drawing up plans for this spring. And then I, I want to give them a small gift certificate to, so they can have a beverage of their choice. It's a small thank you, but we get, I get so many comments about that beautiful garden. And, uh, yeah, every year. And so consider a donation for the city garden too. And, um, let's see, then I have. In November, I made an application for the $500 community grant from Mid-American Energy. And I asked for replacing the Free Little Library that used to be in the triangle. You know, we don't really have a name for our park, but the one that's at Melrose and Cozer, and it's kind of a triangular shape there. So we just call it Triangle Park. And because of the shape. And so we had a free little library before we did some renovation. And that was removed. And so I wanted to have another free little library box built for there and also add some landscaping. And so I just got word last week, we received the $500 grant for that. And I was gonna ask Lisa and Steph to kind of help me with that in the spring because they live close by. And I think they both like doing gardening. I've seen both of them in their gardening. And I think it'd be fun to work on that. And I have a, a farmer's market person that is giving me plans for the Free Little Library. So that's kind of exciting. We'll get that back. Uh, council assignments. And as you've probably seen on the website, Steph is with Community Protection, Lisa, of course, is eGovernment. Tim will be doing building zoning and sanitation. Bobby will continue on finance. And Doug will do streets and sidewalks. And I don't know if Bobby really gave me an answer that he'll continue to be mayor pro temp. But let's get him on tape saying that.
That's just fine.
Okay, thank you. And oh, then I wanted to tell council and announce this to residents that I do have some openings for city committees and city boards. And I have a couple of prospects, but I didn't have time to work on it yet. So if there's a resident interested in serving on a community or city board, please contact me. And then the last thing I have are budget dates. And, you know, a couple of years ago, they changed, the state of Iowa changed when we had to have filings done. And Steve Cool contacted Bobby and I and said that the council needs to save these dates that are coming up in March. So, you know, we'll have our regular meeting February 8th. And then we'll have, we need to have a special meeting on March 1st at 7:00 PM and a special meeting on March 22nd at 7:00 PM. And these are for public hearings that we need to set to approve the budget. And they're usually no more than 30 minutes. And sometimes they're shorter. It just depends. And the state requires the city budgets to be filed by March 31st. And this gives our financial consultant, Steve Cool, enough time to file those papers. So please mark your calendars so that we can meet that night. And that's all I have. Are there any questions? And then we'll go to the legal report and Steve has the resolution. Well, he said it in his report. Steve, why don't you just, I don't want to talk anymore. Why don't you?
Mayor, were there just, just the first and the 22nd for those special meetings? I thought there was a third date or maybe.
Well, there was, but it's the regular council meeting.
Okay, got it. Thank you very much.
March 8th.
March 8th, yeah, March.
Yeah, it's the right, and so I decided it didn't sound so bad when I left it off.
Great, great.
You caught me though. You caught me.
Okay, yeah, so thank you. So with respect to the legal report, the first thing I guess was that conflict of interest form. Please make sure that you sign that if you haven't already and get it to Mike so that he can put that in the minutes that, that it was in before the end of the meeting or part of the meeting. And then with respect to the hotel, kind of not much to report. Mr. Cronenagi, I think, who, you know, a lot of COVID going around and there's, there's some of that that impacted the developers this last go around. We're waiting for a couple of key pieces of information. We really can't finalize things until we have that. They need some more time. Louise and I were working pretty diligently with, diligently within the last few days and it just became apparent we weren't going to get it pulled together. So what the resolution 2201 does is just extends this one more time to, to the February meeting. That's all.
Thank you, Steve. So we have consideration of resolution 2201, the very first one of 22. Here it is. And is there a motion?
A motion.
Motion by Bobby, a second?
I'll second, Louise.
Second by Lisa. Thank you. Discussion. Okay, roll call vote.
John?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Schroder?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Swales?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Steve? Steve Ballard, that is. Okay, we'll go on to the clerk report and you had a lot of things. Did you want to?
No, I really don't, I don't really have anything else to add to my report. The one thing I do want to ask, we do have one person on the meeting tonight on a, with a phone number. 812-760-9228. If you could just unmute for a second and let us know your name so I can get that in the minutes.
That's probably Kathy. She's a colleague of mine, Kathy Scheller.
I had Kathy in here as well. Oh, maybe she dropped off and came back in on the phone number. Okay, got it. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. Any questions for Mike? Okay, we'll go on to the warrants, the city treasurer and warrants. The warrants were sent by Lori with her report. Are there any additions to the warrants?
There is one, the CenturyLink bill came in the mail today, so it's $102.06.
Okay, thank you. Any others?
That was it for me.
Okay. Any objection to pay in the warrants? Hearing none, the warrants will be approved by unanimous consent. Thank you. Any questions for Lori? Okay, we'll go on to, how about we go to streets and sidewalks so we can hear from MetroNet a little bit? And Josiah sent their report. Josiah, do you want to start a little bit? And then we'll talk to MetroNet.
Oh yeah, that'd be fine. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Let me pull up my report here. Sorry. Okay, so, um, as you noticed, we've got Dan from MetroNet here tonight and some of his colleagues. As you can see in my written report, I recopyed the information we provided last month, which sort of summarized our meeting, our initial meeting with them and kind of what they were thinking. They were doing not only wanting to do in University Heights and the services they wanted to provide, but how that fits into sort of what they're doing in the bigger community with Iowa City, Corville. So a, as noted in December, they said they'd be available to attend the meeting and introduce themselves to the council. And again, just sort of summarize who they are and what they're about and kind of what their, what their project is and have the, the opportunity for you guys to hear that and ask questions, so. With that, I think, I think, I think we can hand it over to them and there's some slides there. Mike, on my, after my report here that, that they sent along to use for this presentation.
Kathy, are you on? I'm trying to see if my colleague, Kathy's in business development. Kathy, are you on?
She's on mute.
Let's see if she can get through. Otherwise I can start up. Josiah, do you have the, do you want?
Can everyone hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Thank you. Okay, Dan, thank you. Again, Mayor and members of council, my name is Kathy Scheller. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for, for MetroNet. I'm here with my colleagues, Dan Caciato and Sean Kay, who is the project director for our initiative in the area. I'm just here tonight to talk to you. I work over our entire footprint, 13 states, 100 and plus 20, 100, 120 plus communities regarding our fiber optic footprint. So I'm here tonight just to give you a little bit of a background of who we are at a very high level. I believe if you have any questions that are very to University Heights, I believe Dan and Sean can answer those. But I'm here tonight to just talk to you a little bit about our company and who we are. We have been established since 2004 in Indiana. Currently, we're in 13 states, 120 plus communities. Really largest independently owned fiber optic company in the nation. What we're doing is we're building out fiber optics in both Iowa City as well as Corville. And University Heights happens to be in the middle of our build. And through the work of Sean and Dan, we found that there's an opportunity for us to serve your constituents, to offer them choice. What we, what we provide is fiber to the premise, fiber optics. What that means is that your constituents will have the opportunity to have the best fiber optic infrastructure in the world. And what we're doing is bringing that in to University Heights. We are a fully funded program. We are not asking for any money from the, from University Heights. We're someone that comes in that believes we can bring an impact and have choice for your constituents. What we offer is fiber optics, internet, television, and phone. What that means is that your constituents will have the most accessibility to the best fiber in the world. It's interesting to me because I've been to Iowa City, I've worked with Jeff Fruehman in Iowa City as well as in Corville. I had no idea that University Heights was right in the middle, by the way. It's very interesting to me. So that, that is lovely in itself. I, I found that extremely interesting as I work across the entire footprint, that there is a spot there called University Heights. I did not see that the first time I came through. So I'm so thankful that you're giving us the opportunity to present to you tonight. But what this means is an opportunity for your constituents to have the fastest fiber optics in the world. Our lowest offering is 200 meg by 200 meg. We offer symmetrical speeds. So that means our internet will be 200 down, 200 up. Right now, the highest we give is a gig down, a gig up. We anticipate bringing that even higher as the future unfolds. Now more than ever, through the series of COVID that we've experienced, we know the importance of broadband speeds. But most importantly, I think for you, it's great to bring competition in. We're a company that believes in customer service. We have local customer service representatives. We believe in customer service from day one through construction. We believe that restoration, the work that is involved in this, involves hard work within our customer service, you know, sphere, that we offer residents the opportunity to restore their properties, do the work correctly, safely, and we're looking forward to having the opportunity to potentially come into University Heights. Our pricing product is very well priced. We are competitive or lower than some of our competitors. And we're a company that's looking forward to bringing in this opportunity to have fiber optics, a true fiber optic connection to your residents. I, for one, look forward to the chance for us to come in and give opportunity and choice to your residents. I know that Dan and my colleague Sean are on the line. Should they have, should you have any technical questions regarding our construction? I know that they can answer them. But I must let you know, as you can see through the deck that I provided, we are very big on A, education, B, communication, C, making sure that we follow through. We have a really in-depth construction communication plan whereby we monitor any, anything that would come in from University Heights residents to our organization. We monitor those. So we will have a ticket that is created regardless of if they go to our construction communication website or if they call their, or our 800 number. We will monitor those tickets, be able to report back to council as to what the, the nature of the residents' questions are or concerns. We will report that back to you. So we're very, um, you know, we, we let people know what we're doing here. But I have to tell you, we're very excited of the opportunity to come in there and extend our footprint. Again, we're in Iowa City as well as Corville. And I think that this could be a great opportunity for us to bring competition into the marketplace and allow your constituents to have choice.
Do you want to? Are you taking questions now?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, and you probably heard last month that the company came and met with Josiah and I was there and so was Lisa. I asked another council member to attend, but it was kind of last minute and that person couldn't attend then. But, um, I was very impressed with a lot of things about the company, the customer service. And one of the things was, and maybe you can talk about it, you know, not having those boxes in the, in, in the yards.
Yeah.
Can you comment on that?
Absolutely. So it's really great. So what I love is my, my colleagues, Dan Caciato and Sean Kay are on the line. But I, I, you know, Mayor, what, what I like to think is I'm, I have enough information just to be deadly. So here's what I like to look at because I'm a homeowner myself. And so it's very interesting that you bring that up. So because of technology and the increases that have occurred in technology, we do not have anything above ground. So all of our infrastructure is underground, so it is flat to the ground. So when you see those, I don't know for lack of a better term, because I have them in my yard, you know, the little, the little things that stand up, the, the boxes or the, the posts that stand up. Ours are actually flush to the ground. So we have the same type of apparatus, but it's underground. We go to the same location. So we do not put our, our, our infrastructure where there is not infrastructure. So we follow the grid. So wherever you see those little stands up in the yard, we are there, but we are flush to the ground. And I have found, as I told you, Mayor, members of council, I work across board. It has been a major plus for us that we do that. So we've taken all of the technology and we put it underground so it's not visible. So yes, that's a pretty important component to what we do.
And what, you know, I may, I'm gonna add, Mayor, even the, when we're on the telephone poles as we, we were discussing with, when you met with my colleague Stacy, who is our senior VP, and, you know, Sean and I and Steve, even when we're on the poles, we have this thing called a yellow jacket where the, the splicing and everything is done up, up on the poles. Sean, are you on? Can you just describe that a little bit?
The easiest way to describe it is our footprint is considerably smaller than all others. The easiest way to describe it is our footprint is considerably smaller than all others. You know, every telephone company in Iowa City, Corville, they have pedestals is what they're called. It's the small green boxes in all your yards. You know, we are completely subterranean in that aspect. And our aerial equipment is actually quite a bit smaller than, again, our competitors. We're very, you know, mindful to what our kind of construction does to neighborhoods. So therefore we, you know, chosen the design that's very conspicuous and hard to, it's kind of hard to tell that we're actually there unless we're, you know, in your front yard building it. But other than that, yeah, it's a pretty, pretty hard to tell, tell that we're there.
So you have to work something out with Mid-American Energy to use these poles, correct?
Yes, ma'am. We, the University Heights build is 90% an aerial project. Almost every street has poles. They go either in the front yards or the backyards. And there's a, a small area that we will be doing underground work, but the majority will be aerial construction.
And Mayor, I will, I will concur that we do have pole attachment agreements with Mid-American. Yes.
So Josiah, could you explain just like the other company that came to us? What, what the council needs to consider tonight?
Sure. I assume you're referring to Iman Communications?
I forgot their name.
Yep. So they, they presented to the council last year, if I recall.
Maybe October?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, it was towards the end of the year. So they, we, we've met with them, they presented. And I guess at, at that point, I think at that meeting where they made a similar presentation, they had asked for some verbal feedback from the city council. You know, is this a, is this a project that you want us to proceed with? And, and get more into the detail and design of how we're going to build out? And, you know, go through that process, process of submitting for a, a construction permit ultimately from the city for the work in the right of way. And, and since they just, since you just mentioned that's separate from Mid-American, Mid-American Energy who owns the power poles. As just mentioned, any of these companies that attach their poles have separate agreements with Mid-American to do that. But this would be from the city. So that's kind of the process we went through with Iman was that presentation. And then some, some feedback or thoughts from the council on, on whether or not they wanted them to continue with their design for University Heights if they wanted those services.
So we're looking tonight to see if council would want to continue to look into this with the design.
What's your, your best download speed? Did you say I missed that?
Our, our lowest offering right now is 200 meg symmetrical, so 200 down, 200 up. Our highest is a gig.
One gig.
Down, a gig up, a gig, and then we anticipate going to two gig.
Okay. Where do you, where do you do your satellite, your downlinks at? Is it Davenport or where do you keep your equipment?
Sean, do you have that? Otherwise I can look.
Yeah, actually, the equipment for the University Heights build is actually down the street on Melrose. Right by the, I think it's called the West High School. I'm not from the area, so if I butcher it or a, or a street, please forgive me. But the, the equipment is local, yes.
All right.
If you've driven up and down Melrose and saw a very large tent, yeah, that's, that's us installing it.
Dan or Sean, this is Josiah. Can you speak, do, do you have offerings for commercial as well? Or is this just residential or how does that?
No, it's, it's commercial too. We offer it to commercial. I mean, it's, we offer both. You know, there's the business side and then there's the, the residential side.
We, we are a full-fledged internet service provider, so we offer to commercial as well as homes.
I mean, one advantage, I mean, the, the download speed is an important issue where there was, we are symmetrical. So if you took 500 meg, you're 500 meg down, you're 500 meg up. As more and more homes are getting smart, meaning there's cameras and their refrigerator is hooked up to the internet or your lights are hooked up, more and more you need up speed, not just down speed. And it has to be consistent. And so that's what we provide. In addition to that, there is no, you know, the other thing is people i- in general on the television side, to, to be quite frank, the majority of people don't take our television service. But that's a trend across the country. They're moving towards streaming services like Netflix or Prime or Hulu or Apple TV or, or whatever. And that's what they do. And so that's another important issue that you do want speeds that are consistent to provide that video, which is very bandwidth. Nessa, you need a lot of bandwidth for that and, and we provide it. Other questions?
You want a decision tonight not to, just to take first steps, is that right?
Well, I mean, it, soon, it doesn't have to be tonight. I mean, it, but really soon because we want to proceed. Sean is in process of building Iowa City and we're, Sean, can you comment a little bit about what you've done in Iowa City so far?
Well, the, the, I guess the, the need for a decision and not tonight is that we've already engineered the University Heights area, commercial and residential. We have already applied for the pole attachments with Mid-Am and in partnership with them and your permission. The speed for me would be to be able to come in and service your, service your, your community this summer. I mean, it, it's, you know, I, I could be there probably quicker if Mid-Am would give us the permission sooner.
You know, I'll just comment, excuse me, Sean and Dan and Mayor, members of council. You know, this is an opportunity for your constituents to have choice. We're willing to invest the funds into University Heights to make this a gigabit community. That's what we're bringing to the table here tonight. And of course, I'm sure you need to think about it, but this is an opportunity for your constituents to have the chance to have a choice in their fiber optic provider. Our lowest offering at this time is 200 meg symmetrical. Our highest is a gig symmetrical. And when you have this infrastructure in place, I don't know if anyone has mentioned this to you, but we can go ahead and turn the dial up at any time. So it's going to happen when you have infrastructure like this, we can go to two gig. We can go to five gig. We can go to 10 gig. This is really future-proofed infrastructure that Metronet because of your locale and who you are. We've done our due diligence on University Heights. We are willing to make this investment in your community because we believe we can make an impact. So I believe that that's why we're all here tonight, just to let you know that we've done our due diligence and speaking with the city and your engineers who's online and your, your city. And we're willing to do this for your community.
That's great. What do you need from us?
Is there a reason not to do it? Josiah? Anybody?
Oh, go ahead. Sorry, I think I cut somebody off.
I just, I just want to also include that we have a statewide franchise agreement in Iowa. So we are poised to do the construction there.
This is Steve Ballard. I'm the city attorney. Who's your, who's your statewide franchise agreement with?
So when you ask that question, I guess I'm a novice here. It's with the state of Iowa that your attorney, I, your attorney, I will get that exact person with you. Is that what you needed, the exact entity?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I'd like to maybe see the franchise agreement or talk to your councilor, somebody. Yeah, that'd be great.
I will connect you. No problem.
Thank you.
I'll do it.
You know, the other, I may mention, you know, all boats rise and the tide. When, when Metronet comes into an area, even our competitor, your, your incumbent competitors will improve too. Generally, that's what happens. But as Kathy pointed out, it's really future-proofs your community. And internet is critical in, especially now, but, and it's not going to go away. So you really, the other thing that we may mention too, in terms of some of the marketing, we're, we're pretty simple, you know? I mean, if you call customer service, you get the United States and there's somebody that, you know, is a, a live person in the United States and you're not calling some, another country or whatever. Another thing is we have no contracts. If, if somebody doesn't like our service, they can just get out. You're not, you're not stuck in a two-year contract or a year contract. Our prices don't fluctuate like, oh, well, if you took two years from us, we'll give you a better deal. We give you a better deal right away. And if you don't like it, you just move on. You're not stuck in a contract, which is a real big deal. So those are some of the things. And, and we're very, very transparent. Once, once you're on board, you'll see, somebody will go to our website, they're going to go to the construction site, they're going to go to Iowa, they're going to go to University Heights, they're going to see maps, they're going to have ways of communicating. I mean, we, we talked about this in our physical meeting, but it's important to know that it's, we have a very complex system of communication for residents, both to and fro. So, and there's marketing people. The, our marketing, the marketing people, the, the head of marketing for this area happens to live in the Quad Cities in Leclerc. But he's, he covers also, he's going to cover the Iowa City and that area. So once we get going, we'll be doing events and things like that.
So, so here, so at the bottom line, here, here's the story. So, so city attorney, I will get you the information that you requested just to prove that we are, you know, people that are working very adventitiously in Iowa. We've done very well. Our first city was Davenport, then we got Benton Dorf. Now we're around the, the cities that's around Des Moines, Johnson, Johnston, Urbendale. We also have Des Moines proper. We found that Iowa is a very good state for our organization and we want to continue to move on in that area. I will send you all the applicable information that you requested. I'd like to end this by saying that Mayor, members of council, if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out via email. But we are interested in investing in University Heights. We believe as an organization, we can make a difference. We believe as an organization, we can give your residents choice. And we are looking forward to the opportunity to bring our business into University Heights.
Tim, this is Josiah. I guess just to go back, go back and answer, go back and answer your question. Is, was there a reason not to do it? I, I suppose the, the reason you would not want something is you're going to have more cables on your poles. You're going to have more cables in your right of way. You'll have pedestals. Whether in this case they'll be flush with the ground, but you're going to have more stuff out there. You're going to have construction impact. So, you know, things like that would be maybe a reason why you would not want to do something or add something. But I, I guess, I guess to be fair, if you want to provide these types of services, I don't see any other way you do it. You know, I guess is, is one way to say that.
Is there any reason we can't give them the go-ahead tonight, Louise or council or anyone else?
We can give them the go-ahead tonight.
I'm personally, I'm great with it.
So you know, I don't think you have an agenda item that lets you really take action here. We may need to revisit this.
It was just, this wasn't a, I mean, it was just a, it's not like we're doing it. It's like, are they going to take next steps was my understanding, similar to Iman.
Yeah, thank you.
So I was thinking that was just a consensus that we'll take next steps and, and get into the design. Is that, is that correct? I mean, we didn't make a deal with Iman yet. We didn't make, you know, and so I don't, I don't mean to, but that's how I saw it, Steve. So I didn't, because I know Josiah would have made it an agenda item if it was a decision for going ahead. I think that's down the road.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear. I'll jump back in real quick. Yes, that's my understanding, similar to Iman. I, I think both companies are looking for, you know, hey, if you guys don't want us, you know, if you don't, if this is not something you want, just let us know, you know, because we won't spend the time dealing with it. But yeah, if, if, if this is an interest of the city and that's clear to all you tonight, they're looking for feedback to go to the process where they submit for construction permits and and go through that process, pay for those permits and, and do the drawings and spend the time to figure out probably with me where things are going to go and, and routes and things like that.
Does that help, Steve? Does that help? I mean, it doesn't need, it's just a, it's not a commitment. It's a, it's a consensus to go to the next steps.
Right. Yeah, that's, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear. Thank you.
Yes, and, and, and thank you for that, Mayor and members of council. We just wanted to introduce ourselves to you tonight. And we wanted to let you know that we do have a state franchise agreement, which I will get to council to show you that we do. But this is an opportunity, what we'd like to do when Metronet goes to a new community is although we realize absolutely that you have to be fair and impartial across the board, we just want, as Iman, as you mentioned, to know that people are receptive to the opportunity to have access to what we're bringing in. We're a business that wants to come into University Heights and do business. And we wanted to take and we appreciate Josiah, the opportunity tonight to introduce ourselves to you and to let you know who we are and that we're all around you in Iowa City as well as Corville. And we're looking at University Heights now as well. So thank you so much for your time tonight. We really appreciate it.
Does council, nobody else wants to say anything?
I'm okay with the additional competition. I think that's great for us. I guess my question is, what if between now and say five years from now, we have 10 other companies that want to put fiber in? How do we handle that?
Well, that's up to a council, you know? That's a decision.
I guess we can address that when that time comes, right? Is there anything we need to decide on right now related to that, right?
I'm in favor of moving ahead with, with this.
Yep, I've seen no reason to put the brakes on, I guess.
I'm good. I'm good.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, I think you heard from Five that they want to.
Yeah. Proceed.
I'll look into it more. Next steps. Have our city engineer work with you and see where we go.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And, and I will, Mayor, I will get applicable documents to council. And, I mean, to legal council. And again, I appreciate your, the opportunity to present tonight. And on behalf of our organization, we appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. We'll drop off, the Metronet people will drop off. And Josiah, you could reach out to me or you could reach out to Sean, but we'll, we'll, let's talk very soon.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Goodbye.
Goodbye. Josiah, do you want to continue with your report? I think you had another.
Yeah, I had one other thing. I made a comment on the report and attached the. the ravine restoration report, um, from the environmental consultant who had been monitoring that ravine. This is related to the One University Place development. Um, I included that for you all to look at. I, I suppose the, the main takeaway is that, um, they indicated here at the end of the fifth year that the, uh, the ravine site is now, um, restored and established in a stable, a stable condition and, um, that the native plant, the native planting in the ravine has been essentially successfully established from, uh, when that ravine was first torn up back in 2015. And the second thing would be now that that's done, that property, that land is owned by the city. So any maintenance of that ravine would now go back to the city in the future.
Does anyone have any questions about that? Okay. I mean, I know that, uh, Chief Calce has been informing me that that was coming, you know, about six months ago, you know, in '22, it would be the five years back to the city. And so we got the formal letter now from them. Okay. Anything else, Josiah?
Uh, yeah, so the, the Iman is the other thing. And, and as I noted there, there's nothing new to report. Um, they're still looking at, uh, another update in February, same, same as sort of been, that's been their update since December.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you so much. Uh, we'll go back to, uh, police chief report and committee report. And that would be Chief Troy and Stephanie. Chief, do you want to start?
Sure. Very quickly, COVID has hit us. Uh, hopefully it will be relatively fast-moving like the new variant is. But currently we're short-staffed and pulling some long hours because of it. You'll also see an item two under B, uh, OUP. I did again, mention the prairie. Uh, again, as you're represented to the board of directors, I want to make sure that you heard it from that avenue also. But that will become the city's to maintain. Uh, there have been two recent snowfalls, both over the holidays, one relatively minor and one more significant. I was out of town both of those events. And when I returned on Monday, the third, I took my snow blower, my smaller one, and dragged it around town, delivered notices to 11 properties and attempted, just as a courtesy for the first snow, uh, to remove what snow had not been, uh, yet cleared. Did my best. Much of it was already packed down then, but notices, handwritten notices and the forms were delivered. I didn't receive any feedback from any residents, although I did notice that most of those had been cleared. Uh, finally, down under meeting and events, number three, I just want to give a shout out to Sergeant Tucker. He asked, and since University Heights Police Department does not do a shop with a cop event, he asked about participating and representing, uh, the agency in the shop with a cop event in his hometown. And I gave him permission to do that. So, um, it's a feel-good thing. I, it's something that he likes to do even on his own personal time. Me and his wife, uh, do events like this. But anyway, shout out to Sergeant Tucker for participating in that and representing. And that's all I have unless there's any questions.
No, and I know you met, I saw in your meeting, you met with Steph too, and, uh, uh, had your first meeting, so that's good.
We did, and, uh, making arrangements for, uh, this month's meeting when we sit down and be, hopefully we'll be able to coordinate it. And I can introduce her to Kevin Sanders, the president of the Iowa City Chapter of the NAACP. So yes, that was good to get that under the belt. And I meant to say, Doug, I, I was remiss. I realize that now I did not send you a list of the offending properties, but I'll make sure I get those out to you.
Oh, okay. Very good.
Are there any questions for Chief or Steph? Okay, let's see. Where are we? We'll go down to finance. Bobby, you're going to be collecting the budget numbers here.
Yep, that's correct.
Yeah. Now, I think the deadline that Steve talked to us about was he'd like to have everything by, what's the end of the month? January 31st? Which is a Monday. So let's, yeah, let's use Friday or Monday as a drop dead and I'm, I'll be going to a lot of meetings next week and I can get some figures from them. You know, where they have, uh, we, we contribute to things with like, uh, uh, Urbanized Area Policy Board, what am I trying to say? You know, the, the MPO. That's it. So, and then other figures. And then, um, are there any ones that you wanted a specific council member to get or just, you know, reach out to them? And I'll help you with all of that too. And I know we'll be meeting here in the next, we'll be talking a lot, right, Bobby?
Yes.
Is there anything else?
No, I don't think there's anything major.
Okay, good. Okay, great. Be doing a lot of that soon. So then we have building, zoning and sanitation. And Tim, I mean, this is your real first month that you have an assignment maybe. And, uh, would you like to say a few words?
I was able to meet with Terry and Brian on Friday evening along with you and Mayor. And, uh, was able to start to get a sense of what I'm supposed to be doing with regard to that. So that, that was nice. Maybe I'll have an actual report by the next meeting. So, yeah, it seems like you got a good staff. I worked with Terry for decades at the city of Iowa City. So I knew him well and I will, I'm sure be getting to know Brian as we move forward.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tim. Any questions for Tim? Okay, we'll go to Lisa, the government. You sent around a report, Lisa?
Yes, I did. And I don't have anything to add to that.
Okay. Very good. And, uh, we have announcements next. Are there any announcements?
Louise?
Yes.
We haven't, we haven't done public comment tonight.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, that was a big miss, wasn't it? And I even circled it.
It wasn't, uh, we had a lot of things going on.
Put it in a funny way. I'm going to blame you. No, I circled it because I, I circled it. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you for pointing that out.
Okay.
Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to the council? Were there any members that were here that?
Pat, Pat Yegi is here, but if, unless she, I don't think she's unmuting, so.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mike.
Yes.
Keeping me in order here. I need help. I need help. Thank you. Uh, so do we have announcements? Anyone have an announcement? Um, okay, then, uh, is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing none? The meeting is adjourned by unanimous consent. Thanks, everyone.